Good morning, everyone.
Thank you.
We are reconvening our meeting from Tuesday. We will need an amendment to the agenda.
Yes, if you could amend the agenda to add to business a discussion of the code repair presentation on Tuesday night.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. It's unanimous. And with that, I give it to you, Catherine.
Thank you. Welcome back. As you saw Tuesday night, Hallie Woolis did our economic development obstacle, commercial code repair presentation for you, where she outlined the six categories. And she has approximately 21 areas we have identified. So this work session is to go through each of those 20 items for you. The intent is to just answer any questions, familiarize you with those initiatives. And Matt Kirkland is also here to offer his assistance in answering any questions that we can to help you deliberate this before we move forward in at your next August council meeting. Some of the items you will see are administrative, some of them are council action, and some of them need to go to the planning board first. So we'll try to outline each of those paths for you with clarity so you can direct us how to move forward. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Hallie.
Thank you. So you've got before you a copy of the presentation from Tuesday night, kind of the overarching summary. And then the second document in here is the longer explanation of each of the items that we'll go through today. And then the legal sheet that you have separate of your folder is kind of your one-page summary of all the issues for kind of a quicker reference. And thought that would be helpful. And then at the back is the document that we kind of went to to look at how to approach a lot of this. This is something Matt was familiar with and found. And we based it on this, but tweaked it to fit our issues here and the topics we wanted to tackle. But just so y'all had that as the reference for what we're going through.
Hallie, some of the examples that you used in the presentation, I want to ask you about real quick. Is the Board of Adjustment, is that an opportunity for some of these businesses to file a request of variance order to move forward on these, as opposed to just saying, we have to wait until you make a lot of changes?
So if they've been working with us, then yes, we presented that as an option. I don't know about every single case.
Yeah, I'll be happy to take that one, if that's okay. The Board of Adjustment is authorized to vary dimensional standards that are found in the ordinance. So they can't, they can't do something that's called a use variance, where if a use isn't permitted on the property, they can vary it to allow it. But if it's a strict dimensional standard, like it says you have to be 10 feet off the property line, and they need to be eight feet off the property line, that's what they can vary. That being said, from a practical standpoint, a variance is by design difficult to achieve. The state standards and thresholds that you have to meet in order for the Board of Adjustment to be authorized to grant a variance, from my experience, can be pretty difficult to meet. They are discretionary, so it's a quasi judicial hearing, y'all are all familiar with that procedure. We have to present substantial evidence. So in practice, the variance absolutely is there. Any property owner withstanding is allowed to apply for a variance and be heard by the Board, so they do have that relief. But from a practical standpoint, it can be quite difficult to achieve.
I have one other question that I didn't ask Tuesday night. I wanted to save it for today. Hallie, I know you talked about things in the table of uses that we might need to clarify some of that or rework some of that. And I guess my question is, we just spent an awful lot of time going through the table of uses, reworking it. Does that mean we wasted our time on that? Or?
No, not at all. This is intended for more specific things that, you know, sometimes when y'all are doing it more conceptually, it's hard to know, you know, some crazy business that might come up and how you do it. So the ones that we've identified were from specific instances that we know about. And then you can target it and, you know, more cleanly make edits than broadly doing things. So those are the intent behind these changes.
Can you add to that from the table of use standpoint?
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to. Yeah, the table of use effort that we had, I thought, went quite well. And as you know, consolidated many of kind of the very specific things that are out there into more consistent standards for the table of uses. So we did do a very thorough review, in my opinion, and went through it. That being said, you know, when you, when you think about commercial cores and where the town is moving and how to, how to make that really happen, there are a wide variety of strategies that are available to the town, whether it's, you know, establishing new uses for things that we don't know about, or uses for specific zoning districts or even more broad categories, something like that. There's always opportunity for something like that to happen. And the example that was included, I think, in the, in the presentation is one that we've run into pretty recently, even after the consolidation efforts of the table of uses.
So. So I don't believe at all it was a waste of your time.
Okay.
Organization, the way that you all redid it and organized it, needed to be done. These are very targeted additional changes to the actions within those.
Okay. Because our effort was to reduce
Right.
the number of uses that we had. And I hope we're not going to turn around and now start adding uses back and making it bigger again.
It's very targeted to commercial incentivizing and enhancing.
Hallie, you mentioned Tuesday, there was a business that already rented their building, got their equipment in, was ready to go, but they couldn't receive permission from the town to go forward. Did I understand that correctly?
I believe that was the first example about they wanted to improve it beyond the value amount of the property, and so they couldn't go forward with their full plans. They had to scale back what they did by a lot.
Is that what this is going to address?
Yes, sir.
Are they able to conduct business now?
Yes, sir.
Wherever they are.
With these changes?
With, with these changes.
They would be able to.
I don't know anything about it. I just heard what you said, and I thought, oh, shucks. Yeah.
Yeah, she, she did a great job of outlining several real-life examples that what you're discussing today and hopefully vote on in August and September would address each of those situations and help those business owners.
Okay, if y'all are ready, we can go through this. And we'll start with procedures. So these are items that are more procedural, and this is one of the topics that has kind of all sorts of avenues for approvals for this. So some of this Matt is already kind of working on internally, things that can improve procedurally. Some of these are ordinance changes that would go to the planning board and then to you guys. So we can start with item one, adjust regulations for non-conforming buildings and uses. And Councilman Craft, this is the example that was given. A non-conforming property often faced overly rigid restrictions, making reinvestment difficult. So they wanted to redevelop this property, make it a lot nicer, but the value exceeded 75% of it. So what, they would have had to come completely into compliance with, with everything. And the strategy for doing this is you can allow them to come into more compliance over time, so it's more incremental to do that.
But get their doors open.
So in a situation like that, if their existing space, how far does that go? Does it apply to North Carolina building codes or just our ordinance? It's like if they're electrical and their plumbing is out of, out of code, are they not required to bring it up to standard?
Yeah, that's a good point, actually. The, yes, so if a new use was coming in and there was a non-conforming situation on site, and they're wanting to upfit the building, actually, the requirement to bring it up to code could kick it into the more than 75% category. And then you're stuck with, well, the building code says I have to do this to make the building usable for my use, but the local zoning non-conformity ordinance is telling me I have to bring the whole thing into compliance, which might be even more major renovations than just what the building code has. That's certainly been a situation that, that I've seen in plenty of jurisdictions. But all those, anytime what happens with, when we look at a non-conformity is, if someone comes in for a building permit or electrical or mechanical permit, we look at the estimated value of that worth, of that work versus the value of the building and make that 75% comparison then. So, yeah, any type of work that you do would count towards that 75%.
I would be very reluctant to let somebody skate on life safety issues.
Yes, ma'am. And the, the building safety stuff, the electrical, any of that, yes, you have to come into compliance with that regardless of, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, I think you have flexibility in terms of things like setbacks and...
And that's what we're talking about here, I think. Yes, ma'am.
So anything construction-related, electrical, plumbing, ADA, structural, everything has to be according to state regulations?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So to carry that out further, so what this is really addressing is, if you can shorten the setbacks, or the heights, or something like that, as long as everything else is in compliance statewide.
So I think just by way of example, let's say you had a building that was built many, many years ago, before there was even setback regulation for the town. So you might encroach on a setback, and you buy that building, and you want to renovate it and upfit it just internally. You're not even changing anything on the site. Well, if you, if that internal outfit makes 75% of the value of the structure, well, then our ordinance requires you to come into full compliance. So you might have to, you know, knock a part of the building back, or, you know, even demo and rebuild the whole building, when, like Hallie said, you might be trying to renovate to improve the building for everybody. So it...
And you've been finding this too often?
I don't have a ton of examples of this, but it has happened a few times in the two, only two years I've been here. And those are big, big money investments, big developments, so.
If you're, if you're looking at this as a whole, and we're trying to encourage property owners, business owners, to make improvements for the town, as we're getting ready to make streetscape improvements, we're working on the aesthetics, why are we limiting them from making the improvements? So, yes, with all the safety and building code regulations, non-negotiable, but why did we have an arbitrary regulation to not allow them to invest more in enhancements?
And this is the perfect example of one that would benefit more the smaller developer because they won't have the pockets to do the full, bring it into full of our compliance, whereas someone with more resources would.
Encouraging.
Hallie, can I ask? Where you have staff resources, are these accounted for, does this body of work accounted for in the budget? Or would these require any modifications? I'm just curious. And if you can't answer that question, that's fine.
A lot of, up to this point, has been my work, but kind of after this point, I'm looking at Matt, is the planning guys.
Yeah, and if, if you take a look on the, on the legal sheet that Hallie prepared for you, the, the la, the second to last column talks about the, the staff resources that would be involved in making some of these changes. So it's kind of categorized as small, medium, large, extra-large. So the extra-large would be things that are major lifts that, that might take quite a bit of time to actually navigate, you know, right and work through. And the smaller ones are simpler changes. So hopefully that kind of helps set some context around, you know, how fast we can expect things to, to move forward. The smaller things are, are much more easily changeable, basically.
What I'm hearing is it's all part of your normal portfolio of...
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
And then could you explain a little bit what you mean by community sensitivity?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that was one of the considerations in the original lean code tool that we use. It had like an assessment. So it's really about how much community engagement, each topic will need, how much education about it. And so that original tool helped us get this.
Excellent. Thank you.
Catherine, on here, on this sheet, one of the 21 points, number three, would go to council, and the other 22 would go to the planning board first and then council?
That is correct.
So in August, we're just going to talk about one more thing.
Save that.
In August, we're only going to have one, point number three brought to us.
Well, no, we would want your approval to recommend it to the planning board. So if there are items on here that you did not want to move forward with, you would have that discretion.
So we would address all 21?
If you want to approve the next step to have these, request that these go to the planning board, that's your discretion in August. That help? And maybe this is obvious, but I want to make sure, they're not different sheets. We're, they're all interrelated. We're talking about these six, the details of each one are color-coded, those six, and the documents before you are in that same order. So we're on procedure number one. So we're in box one, and there's seven in box one. We're on number one.
Trying to give you different ways to look at it, because I know it's a lot of stuff to keep track of.
But they're all very nicely organized.
We need visuals. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm also a visual learner. And Councilman Craft, number three specifically is fees. So the reason that says council is because I think that would be next year with your fee schedule, or I don't know if we could do it between them, but...
But I like the language you put in there, one, one fee application, instead of driving up here every other day.
We feel comfortable with moving to item two. So that's the, improve the application and review processes. The strategy to improve that is to establish a formalized transparent application process with clearly defined steps, roles, and review timelines. Create internal protocols for staff coordination across departments, and ensure timely feedback. Publish, publish accepted, expected timeframes for each review stage, and commit to response deadlines where feasible. Create application checklists to ensure applications are ready for review before people are submitting them, and using software or improving our existing software to track statuses and communicate with applicants. Reduce review times for by right development approvals. So a lot of the things that we can do, the process is a big one. A lot of these Matt and his team are already working on. But this, as far as the customer service portion, it makes a huge difference, all of these things could.
On the surface, that just, that to me looks like it's all internal. So where would the planning board or council fit into that? Seems to be all about internal processes.
Some of that is actually written in the ordinances that Matt...
Yeah, so depending on how, how much or little council wants to dig into this, you know, you might run into instances where the, you know, site plan review that you, that you guys go through, you know, it could be streamlined in some way or improved. Though, if you want to go that far with it, then that would, those procedures are particularly written in the ordinance and would have to be amended. The internal stuff, as Hallie mentioned, we've made a lot of headway on that in the last couple of months, as far as like creating the internal protocols for staff coordination, trying to use our software more effectively and communicate better. We, we, just a few weeks ago, actually rolled out a new internal procedure to try to get the, the staff review of applications much more coordinated, and it's been going pretty well so far, so.
Streamlining the time that it...
Yeah, a lot of that, you're right, in terms of creating the checklist, that's all internal work, and we're already focused on that as development services staff, absolutely.
I'm encouraged by all of this so far. This isn't additional manpower, is it?
No, it's making better use of our existing manpower.
One of the things I hear a lot is, are, is about inspections, that one person will go out and review at a particular point in the development, and then the next time, someone else comes back and has them redo something that's already been signed off on.
Absolutely.
And that goes on continually, and they feel like they're never finished with something and have to undo work that's already been signed off on. Is that being addressed in the processes?
Yes, ma'am. That's actually my next internal topic to work on in the department. Plan review and permit review was first, and inspections is my, my next big topic to try to help streamline and communicate more effectively with people. You know, I can understand it being frustrating when you, you get one inspection and then you come back and have another one that's problematic.
It could be expensive, and it's time-consuming, which adds up to dollars as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so I'm glad you're addressing that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on this side?
We're never going to let you get through.
That's okay. At least while we're here.
The more we understand, the better, right?
Right.
So item three is consolidate and right-size application fees. The strategy here would be consolidate some of the fees into a single or fewer fees where we can, that are easier to understand and navigate, and to also scale fees based on project size. This would help smaller projects pay a little bit less, and fees more accurately reflect the level of staff review required for these. And to provide the full fee schedule online with examples and definitions to promote more transparency, and so people have an idea of where, where they might fall.
I know it's early, but will this same discussion take place next Tuesday, when the builders and landscapers come for their meeting?
We want to hear from them. So primarily, it's for us to hear their concerns, but that's exactly what this will help us with, is when they share their concerns, we can either tell them that we're addressing that, or we might add to this. So it's perfect timing. We'll get their feedback as well before you vote on anything.
Because I've heard constantly from builders that their permitting fees are killing me. Yeah.
You know, conversely, Catherine, if there are things that are on here that nobody mentions in that meeting, maybe that's an opportunity to maybe replace this with something else that should, that comes up as new.
Yeah, I will say, the, the original document, the lean code tool that we used for this, had some things that we hadn't been thinking of beforehand, but I think as we get further down the road in some of this, it, it is kind of ahead of us predicting things that might be an issue. So yes, some of them may not be a problem now, but would help us in the future.
But as we discussed Tuesday, if we are serious about our commercial residential ratio changes, if we are serious about implementing the new land use plan as it is in draft now, if we are serious about making sure we have that diversity of tax base, these are things that we know we need to do. So I would be surprised if too many of them come off the list, even though we know there might be some adds to it. Want to hear it?
So item four is provide clear and objective standards. The strategy is to revise development standards, particularly those related to site design, landscaping, signage, and building form, to include clear, measurable, and objective criteria. Use more graphics and tables and checklists to communicate expectations. A lot of the time, what I hear from people is just so confusing. They feel like they have to come to us to get any answer because they can't navigate it themselves. And that would also help us with staff capacity, if they could do more of the legwork themselves and understand it, and not have to go back and forth so many times with comments, and help ensure fair and consistent decisions.
Yeah, if it requires interpretation, we leave ourselves open to interpretation. Whoever is on the other side of the window, and they come to, they know the next day, and they get a different answer.
That's right. And this is, this one's a big, heavy lift.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll say, this is something that we, we basically almost constantly work on, you know, several of the text amendments that planning board and council have worked on over the last even couple of years have been striving for this goal of more objectives, clear standards for everybody. But it's something that you can always be improving and working on, just because, you know, just like a, a new use, there, you know, there's, something's going to pop up that you don't anticipate, and when you have to, to your point, make that interpretation, you know, that's when you kind of get into the back and forth discussion side of it.
Think you cover everything, but sure enough, you don't.
What I like about this process, I think about the work that we did on all the changes in the TOU. Those, to me, were more rear-wood looking. This is looking through the windshield. This is anticipating for the future. So rather than retrofitting what we already have, it's what can we do for the next 10 or 20 years? So I love this approach.
Item five is to create subdivision standards for walkable mixed-use districts. The strategy would be to develop tailored subdivision standards for mixed-use and commercial districts that encourage the smaller blocks, access points, pedestrian activity, and integration with the surrounding uses. This would align with our vision for the more walkable, economically vibrant, commercial areas, and support our public infrastructure in those places.
Matt, from a zoning perspective, you know, I use the term subdivision probably different from most laymen use the term subdivision.
A hundred percent, yes, sir.
But from a zoning perspective, what does that exactly mean?
Yeah, so subdivision, from the technical standpoint, is merely the division of land for sale or development. There are certain exemptions in the state statute, but that's how the state statute defines a subdivision. So when you're dividing land for sale or development, that, that's a subdivision. Versus, the layperson probably thinks about the subdivision as my neighborhood that I live in necessarily. But this is more talking about like, how do we, from a procedural standpoint, when somebody wants to divide land, set it up so that that pattern of development that we want to see in commercial or mixed-use areas is the outcome of it?
Thank you. Is comprehensive land use plan coming in August, or is that September?
Probably later, October, September, October.
September, October is the timeframe for the comprehensive land use plan, yes, sir.
And both groups are going 100% full steam ahead, but maybe not nullifying each other?
Yes, sir.
I, I think they're very well-aligned. That's, that's part of this work, is if, this is what we hear the land use plan's going to say, this is going to take some time, so let's start preparing, so that we're doing exactly what our plan says.
So as we talk about making changes to attract businesses, is there going to be a point somewhere in, in everything that's working together, particularly the economic strategic plan, that's going to help us identify the types of businesses that we want to attract here, that there are needs for, or, you know, I hate to say this publicly, but, you know, we don't need another Dollar General, and another mattress store, and another car wash. But there are some niche markets that we don't have, and you have to go to Leeland or Wilmington or Charlotte to, you know, to get those services. And so as we're looking at trying to tailor our ordinances to attract people, I hope somewhere along the line, we're also going to look at, what do we want to, who do we want to attract? What do we want to attract?
So I think we both have perspectives on that. I'll touch on it for a second, and then please... I'll touch on it for a second and then please add to it. That is exactly why we're, we've gotta do this. This is the foundation for your house. You can pick different house plans or recruit different businesses, but you can't do any of that if you don't have the foundation ready for them to come. If we don't have places to offer them, if we have land that's already designated residential, where are they gonna come? If our rules are so prohibitive that they're, the numbers don't work, so all of this will hopefully allow for us to then be able to recruit that broader variety that we want. But there's nothing in here that is a targeted recruitment. It's a general strategy that you have to be welcoming, you have to have your rules and your processes set up before you even start that recruitment process. Now you can add to it from a.
Yeah, it will absolutely be a part of what the Commerce and Main Street helps us with, with our Economic Development Strategic Plan. Okay, item six is set development thresholds. So the strategy here would be establish clear thresholds that determine the level of review required for different types and scales of development. It would allow administrative approval for projects under a certain square footage or some that only had minimal slight changes while reserving the board-level review for more complex proposals. This would help ensure that the review process are proportional to the project's impact and make the system more efficient and predictable. All right, item seven is craft by right standards. The strategy here would be to establish clear by right standards for typical commercial and mixed-use developments. When projects meet these standards, they should be allowed to proceed without additional approvals or hearings. This approach provides predictability, reduces delay, and encourages projects that align with the town's goals.
This is a whole lot of rewriting, isn't it?
Some of it's more than others. It varies by topic, yes sir.
It really is a five or six-month project for the Planning Board.
I mean, we could probably, and that's something that maybe we'll want some feedback on, or maybe we'll work on some more internally after the, after this discussion, but there's opportunities to break things out, you know, by topic or by item and move some of the smaller, you know, things that are less lift forward more quickly than some of the ones that might require more. But as Catherine mentioned, the intent is to be ready to essentially hit the ground running with some of these changes, so.
But it's a long process.
Yeah.
But we gotta start.
It's long overdue, sounds good.
And they're kind of arranged within each of the categories. The one at the top is the easier and the one at the bottom is the hardest. You ask this question at the right time because that's one of the biggest lifts.
At the Commercial Mixed Use Development, CLD, that we have now, how many of those do we, no, I'll put you on the spot, but like what is the universe of those that would, could require a special use permit, knowing that we're talking about just very, individual parcels or maybe two parcels that are side by side? Is it, is it that many?
It really depends on, frankly, it kind of feeds back into item six, is what's the development threshold that you want to set for a special use permit? Is there a development threshold that you want to set for a special use permit? You know, we, the most recent special use permit you did have was applied for under a mixed-use type of development. Do we have many of those large parcels that don't already have some development approval over top of them? Not necessarily. So hopefully that kind of answers your question, but yeah, I don't have a number or type or amount right off the top.
I'm just thinking more as we go down Oak Island Drive, you kind of give us, you're looking through the windshield. I mean, do you see maybe two situations where there could potentially be using the current ordinance that we have, a special use permit?
Current ordinance?
Or is it twelve or is it?
Yeah.
I can't imagine more.
It's a handful, it's very small.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at the end of each category, we've added in what parts of the strategic plan that this would align with. So 1.3, provide a friendly and accommodating customer service. 4.1, enhance the business-friendly ecosystem. 4.3, develop amenities and infrastructure to create a sense of place. 5.1, promote compatible land development. And 5.3, balance preservation enhancement of commercial areas with new development opportunities.
What was the first one?
Provide friendly and accommodating.
Three.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, thanks.
And then we did the same thing with the draft com-plan, there are action items within that and the ones that align here. I'm not gonna read all this because it's longer. You have, you have it after each section.
And I'm gonna plug, the draft land use plan is online and available for comment for anyone who'd like to review these.
Okay, so moving on to category two, urban form. So this is about what it act, what our commercial area actually looks like, the design of buildings, the streets, blocks, public spaces. So item eight is amend setback regulations. The strategy here would be to reduce or eliminate some front setbacks in commercial areas to allow buildings to be located closer to the sidewalk. This creates the more traditional Main Street feel, supports pedestrian activity, and encourages active ground floor uses that engage the street and all of the community engagement we've done in the last years, walkability, pedestrian safety. This is really key in helping accomplish that.
But to help the setbacks at the sidewalk, that would almost have to be a new building. The existing buildings are already established.
Right, and that's true, but, you know, feeding back into our earlier item about adjusting regulations for non-conforming uses, there's opportunities to, say, if you're bringing the building closer into compliance with the ordinance, so let's say you have a building that's far back and we amend the setbacks to say, we want you to bring it closer to the street. You say, I want to add in addition to my building. Okay, we'll build it on the front closer to the street. If we, if we adjust that non-conformity standard to say, okay, we're gonna allow you as long as you're coming closer into conformity with the ordinance, then even on some existing buildings that are just looking to expand or outfit, they might have that opportunity to bring it closer.
So if that's a principal outcome that we're targeting, it seems to me that the closer buildings are to the street, the less social space will be available for the community to have places to sit, maybe a, you know, a piece of art or a fountain or, so the closer they are, we're minimizing the amount of social space they might, there might be unless we, they're using.
Not necessarily.
So, no, I've been fortunate enough to work in places that do have a, instead of a setback, you have a build two, so you want to build close to the street. And what you do there is you don't, you don't allow the building to take up the entire frontage of it, so then you have, you might have a break beside of it where, hey, that's where your, a little bench space or a piece of public art or something like that goes in it. For anybody who's interested in how that might work, if you go check out the new Habitat Restore in Leland, actually, you can see they built that under a downtown-oriented development pattern. And you'll see the building is very close to the pedestrian capacity, there's windows on it, it takes up a big block, but then when you kind of get to the end of the building, there's a little piece of public art and a couple places to sit because they said, we want you to build this close to the street and take up this much of the frontage to leave a little bit over for something like a public space like that.
So we're thinking broadly in those terms.
And that would be a Developmental Services call?
So you'd have to establish these, you know, these standards through the ordinance in order to do it, but that's what we'll be happy to, you know, start working on crafting, absolutely, if council wants to move forward with some of this.
So right now, if you had a development that wanted to do that, that wanted to create that walkable, attractive front, they're prohibited from even doing it currently. They've got lots of parking asphalt in the front. So we have to get those ordinances out of the way to even stimulate that redevelopment, that thinking.
That thinking is the key, right? It's how people begin to rethink how they're using their property as opposed to how they're using it now. And I'm getting in the weeds here, but how's that normally done? Is it, do we maybe suggest things? Do we work with a group of business owners who might come to us and we see an opportunity to maybe them to, for them to think about their collective space a little differently?
Well, they probably wouldn't currently because they're restricted.
I get that.
Yeah, so the education of the changes, assuming that they go through, that will be the next phase and then we can educate them that these new opportunities are now available to them.
And give them some visuals to help stimulate that thinking. Okay, that's where, that's where I wanted to go, thanks.
I just wanted to add that this will create more public space in reality because, because we're having them do setbacks, then they're putting their parking there and that takes away from any public, any public space. And even to like retail businesses, being able to, you know, have signs on the sidewalk, like that kind of things. This also aligns with the streetscape plan, which they have built in places for benches, place, you know, those kinds of gathering places at the ends and corners of these. So it's intended to work together for that purpose.
The existing businesses by state law, do they have to have so many parking spots per business?
We have a whole section on parking that we're gonna get to.
Glad you asked that.
That's the next one, actually.
I mean, I was thinking, I was going through my mind as to, and I immediately thought hippie chick and some of those that have all the big parking in front, if they wanted to do something else, do they still have to comply with so many parking spaces?
Well, right now, they have to comply with a whole lot of parking spaces.
Yeah.
So if we make these adjustments, then they would be able to.
Patience, grasshopper, I'll wait.
You teed it up psychic.
You're using that same, that same strip where hippie chicks is, I mean, there is, they have no ability in them to put parking in the back. The back is the alleyway, so, you know, I think a lot of businesses without, you know, taking out a map, our impact have that same exact limitation.
You gotta think down the road, the redevelopment of it.
And you're watching our new streetscape plan.
Yep.
And the options they show us for parking.
So item nine, require parking to be in the proper location.
Try not to read ahead.
This is exactly it. Here, there, the parking was built in front a lot of the time, creates a barrier between where people are walking in the sidewalk and going into the business. They pull, pull in right off the street, anywhere they want, in a lot of places. So the update here would require parking to be located behind or beside the building in designated commercial zones where front parking is unavoidable, require enhanced landscaping, screening, or reduce the driveways to minimize visual impact and preserve the pedestrian experience.
So this would actually accelerate our ability to put in sidewalks and social space.
Yep. Right now, you're taking your life in your hands walking down parts of Oak Island Drive. Even going business to business is so difficult because cars could be pulling in and out in, in such a large variety that we haven't enabled that walkability with the parking in the front.
Would this thinking put an additional financial strain on businesses?
So on the parking section of this, we're gonna have, hopefully have these two together that won't help that from happening, prevent that from happening.
It's not a requirement, it's enabled.
Carrot instead of the stick.
So item 10 is amend vegetation requirements for commercial zones. So this is to update the ordinance to allow more flexibility in commercial zones, to adjust some of the planting ratios by lot size, providing alternatives such as V and Lu, or I know that exists, but changing the V and Lu a little bit, allowing more flexible placement of the trees or permitting a substitution of smaller species where available. And this is also a point that aligns with our streetscape plan, which calls for landscaping in the public right-of-way. So it's not like there won't be any, this will just allow the commercial use to be more commercial intended and then have our vegetation in the public right-of-way.
So if they have a small parcel and they're coming into, or if they're making enough adjustments that they're required to come into the new compliance and the new compliance says you need 17 more trees, they can't do it. So we will continue to stay exactly the way we are.
This is so smart.
So item 11 is increase height limits in commercial zones. The strategy here would be to increase the allowable building height in targeted commercial districts to support more flexible and economically viable development. Consider allowing additional height in exchange for public benefits such as improved design, shared parking, or public space. This change makes redevelopment more feasible, especially in areas with limited lot depth or frontage, which I know I've said this many times, but this was built as a highway corridor, a long strip. It's very narrow, it's really only one parcel deep, and the economics for what we want in our walkable district just isn't possible in how it is. So going a little bit higher will help us get there and help us make that financially feasible to get the walkable neighborhood that we want.
Is this pretty much only Oak Island Drive?
CB.
CB is the, is the most important.
Mostly East Oak Island Drive, yes sir.
Because Oak Island Drive is not deep, the lots.
That's right, it's very limited application of this.
Matt, I don't remember the map, is there CB anywhere on the beach strand?
Oh, no ma'am.
Not on.
Yeah, I think outside of like the, yeah, pond in Long Beach is either CR or CLD.
That's right, yeah. And that's, you know, that's figuring out the areas you want to target, you know, one of those allowances, what areas would you consider, that's all a part of this conversation and as we go forward.
Yeah. So everything you've said so far, Hallie, I, I like everything I'm hearing except for this one. So I'm gonna try to keep an open mind here, but the thought of, you know, for other towns that have business districts, they've got a business district that's more than one lot deep. Our business district is one lot deep with a buffer either being the alleyway or fence with the house being next. The thought of raising that another eight or 10 feet to get another level of, for parking, I think the pushback we would, we would receive would be significant. And I would see that, to me, that was negative in terms of trying to make the streetscape more attractive by raising the height of buildings. I mean, I think the better way to do it would be for us to look at some of the, we talked about some of the potential properties that we could look at from a centralized parking area, and rather than raising the height to put parking under some of the buildings, is purchasing some lots and use that for centralized parking as long as we have the walkability. Because right now, the mindset with people, everybody, you go to a business, you park in front, you leave, you go to another business, you park in front. And if we have more of a centralized parking mechanism, rather than trying to continue the mindset of you've got to park wherever, whatever retail business you're going to, I just think that that was gonna, that's gonna be a tough, tough discussion.
Absolutely. Yeah, I understand that this is scary, especially in a beach community, but the, it's not just about to allow for parking is the other thing, it's to make any sort of mixed-use economical violence, especially, especially if we did like upper-story residential, they have, the cost to do that is so expensive because there's so many more code things that they have to do to protect the people living in the upper stories, that it's very expensive to build. that it's very expensive to build that now.
So Withers Ravenel used a graphic example in the land use plan showing parking underneath a building. And I've done it twice, it's terribly expensive. It is almost cost prohibitive to put parking under a building because of the structural, structural requirements.
And we've got the inconvenience of having two downtowns, actually. We have Long Beach and if you go to Dairy Queen, and then you wanna go to Salt 64, and then you wanna go to Second Wind, you're getting in your car, getting in your car, getting in your car. So that makes it even harder.
Absolutely. We have a lot of quirky things that make it hard to get to where we're trying to go.
We, we can also visualize, visualize them as two distinct commercial districts. So perhaps you park and walk in the one, but may have to drive to the second. But then when you get to the second, that could also be walkable there. So it could at least minimize the current situation.
And that graphic, I did include it in the presentation, I think. If, yeah, it's on page four of the PowerPoint in the front of your book. If you wanna flip back and look at that. The one that's in the draft land use plan. Okay, we feel ready to move on? Parking is the third category. Item 12 here would be to enable shared parking. So this would be allow and incentivize shared parking agreements between adjacent or nearby properties with complementary uses. Provide a clear process for establishing shared parking arrangements and reduce total park, parking requirements accordingly. This approach makes better use of existing infrastructure and reduces development costs.
Withers and Ravenel's addressing that in the land use plan.
Yes, sir. This is, you know, if the bank is next door to the bar, and the bar is really busy at night, but there's nobody at the bank, then they can have a shared parking agreement that they submit to planning and allow, allow both of those uses to exist.
I mean, the times I've gone to Salt 64, I've parked a hippie chick at seven o'clock at night, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of this is informally happening right now, yes, sir.
Because I don't wanna back out onto the street.
Absolutely.
You know, I think it's something like where this is just a beautiful thing to think about. You got, you know, Grape Nell, which has such limited parking. And right across the street is Better Beach Rentals. And they have, you know, seventy-two no parking signs twenty-four-seven. And if there was a shared parking arrangement with them, that would be a great opportunity to be able to put cars where they need to be as opposed to parking in the, along the right-of-way adjacent to Grape Nell.
Can we legislate that?
We can incentivize it.
Yeah, I mean, certainly parking lots are expensive and each business has to pay for their own wear and tear on their parking lot. So I think that would be some, some private discussions with them. But the other thing that we can do and with the streetscape plan is allowing additional layers of parking on the side streets. And so it's not all gonna fall into each business to have to come up with fifty parking spaces. We allow them to count other, that's the idea, is other creative opportunities for parking.
Before he sold it, the fellow who owned Frosties, the ice cream store. And I went in there one day to back myself up, buy some ice cream. And he made a point to point out to me that the bar, two or three buildings down, would take up all his parking spots and nobody could pull in front of his store to get ice cream. And I think they ended up making peace, but the bar put up signs, do not park in front of Frosties. But that shared space has to be agreed on because if I can't get into Frosties, I'll go to Sweet Trees.
And a lot of times I've seen in practice, having the shared agreements in place from the get-go helps a lot of those issues that come up when there are issues that they've, they've all agreed to play nice formally. And they'll, you know, do that in reality.
And this is doing what we can do to also help and incentivize that. We can look at parking options, we can look at side street options in the right-of-way. What can we do to help incentivize those additional agreements?
So there's at least one situation I'm aware of where the row has a no parking sign in it and there's an encroachment onto the right-of-way with bordered vegetation. How does that, how is that allowable? Is that a permit? Is that, how did that business?
You're talking about the signage?
Accommodate that?
I specifically asked Catherine that question. Those signs are put up by the town.
Those are our signs.
Now, that doesn't address the beds, the landscape beds, but the signs don't belong to the business. The signs belong to the town.
Well, but how does one arrive at that decision? It's in direct conflict with creating space in the row for parking for businesses.
Because we don't have that opportunity yet. We wanna create that opportunity to have parking allowed there.
This is backing a lot of education.
Now it's not. Yep. It's hard, this, this is a lot, but that's why this work is so important. Collectively, we've identified the pain points.
Because that's hurting businesses.
And Hallie's hands have been tied on telling people to come to Oak Island, I'm gonna roll out the red carpet to you, but you can't do this, 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 or this.
So item thirteen is reduce parking requirements. So, and I will say just a note about all of these parking things. And maybe Matt, you can help me explain this. It's like you, you could do, you could do some, you could do all, or you could do one that wouldn't require you to do all of them.
Yes, that's right. That's a good way to describe it, I think.
So reducing parking requirements would mean reducing what we require that they have now, just reducing the overall number. So keeping some requirements, but making that number lower. And you could do it based on the content, the size, the location, and more walkable areas or commercial zones. Allow lower parking ratios that reflect reduced demand and alternative modes such as biking or walking. And this goes back to efficient land use and supports the smaller-scale businesses.
That goes back to Mr. Kraft's earlier question, that those are yours to change. We can change how many required spots.
This is a little bit longer term in my mind, right? So you really need to have the infrastructure, the walkability, everything built in before we can potentially make any adjustments to parking spaces, right? Because without that, to your point, we're gonna ask people to play Frogger as they go from business to business and, so without a sidewalk.
I would say some of this is they have, they're already being flexible to not hurt business. So, I mean, that's fair, right?
You can, you can give them the option so that if they are a type of business that perhaps doesn't have as much traffic, that they might not mind shrinking their required parking spaces.
Nail salon or a haircut.
Give them the option.
Or it's more transient parking, right? You know, okay, I donuts, right? You're there for ten minutes on a good day. On a bad day, you're thirty minutes waiting for donuts, but the car is constantly rolling over.
So why do they need fifty spots? Right. Good point.
So item fourteen is to count on-street parking. And again, if we are implementing our streetscape plan, we'll have more dedicated on-street parking close to businesses.
But if we did that and didn't change the ordinances, we'd have created all this additional parking publicly and yet still require them to have more. So you have to work together. You have to have these changes.
If we're giving them four on-the-street spaces, we need to acknowledge that.
They are not allowed to count that, then.
Right now.
They're building their own, that's right.
And this goes back to that efficient use of the little commercial space we have in our commercial core. We use our public space smarter to allow them to use their commercial space to the best it can be used. So item fifteen is just eliminate or reduce parking minimum requirements. Eliminate parking minimums altogether in designated commercial areas or create overlays where they are significantly reduced. Let the market decide. Site conditions dictate proper parking levels while preserving flexibility for the town to impose conditions if needed through site plan review. This is where I think most towns and cities are moving towards. When people are picking where they're gonna have their business, let them decide how much parking they're gonna need and if it will suffice. And if it doesn't, then they pick a different location. And then again, there are the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan alignment. Okay, so topic four is site development. And item sixteen is reform vehicular site access standards. So this is discussing adjusting driveway spacing and access requirements to reflect the scale of a layout of walkable commercial areas. Could allow narrow driveway widths, reduced spacing, or more flexible locations in mixed-use or redeveloped sites. These changes will help make infill and small lot development more feasible while maintaining safety and functionality. So this is the curb cut thing that we keep talking about in a lot of these. There's a lot of unnecessary ones, or it's just none at all. You just turn directly into the parking spot. Item seventeen is eliminate buffer requirements in mixed-use districts. The strategy here would be to remove or reduce buffer requirements within mixed-use districts or designated walkable commercial areas. Replace them with context-specific transitions like facade step downs or shared open space that support integration while protecting neighborhood character. The one that I've seen a lot, which I don't think of an example here, but it's like they're required to build a landscape buffer that you can't even walk through. So you have to like go all the way around blocks or out of a development sometimes because you've created this, this buffer. You end up hurting walkability, which was the point in the first place. Those are the only two for site development. Topic five is signage. And the item is to simplify signage requirements. I said this in the presentation on Tuesday, but this is the number one thing I hear about. It's very confusing for businesses. And they all in some way or another end up doing this one. So a lot of our business owners aren't actual property owners, but when it comes to the sign, they are the one dealing with it. And it's kind of in a bunch of different places, it's confusing, there's lots of ratios. They feel like they have to come to us to tell them exactly what it is. And then sometimes some of them even feel so restricted on what it says they have to do. So the strategy here would be to streamline the signage section, consolidate some of the sign types, standardize size and height limits across similar zoning districts, using more tables and graphics that clearly explain what is permitted. Provide distinct signage standards for walkable commercial areas versus our highway corridors. This will help reduce confusion, speed up review, and make signage more responsive to different development contexts.
I like the, the opportunity to clean up what is not very nice right now. I like that a lot. Right, we've got the neon lights that are doing this, we've got the flag signs, we have the pole signs, we've got, do we have, how many signs would, commercial signs, signs in commercial district are in violation of our sign standards? Do we have any now?
Oh, I wouldn't know that off the top of my head, sir. I'd be happy to look into it and research it for you. Many of the, the signs that we have around town are actually quite a bit older and you see some of them fall into disrepair especially. And so, you know, I will chime in from, from a planning perspective. When you, when you try to, when you think about a walkable, especially a mixed-use or a commercial development, the signage types are much different that you see in that type of district. You don't see a lot of, you know, the buildings are closer, so you don't need a pole sign. You know, the, the scale is on the, the more human scale. So even as we look at simplifying the sign code, you know, in those areas where we do a mixed-use development, you know, those, those signage types might even need to be different. Maybe it's a, a little bit larger wall sign in place of a, of a pole sign because you're pulling your building closer and well, that, that sign's gonna be much more visible. But to, to your question, I'd be happy to try to do kind of a survey of the island. Most of the, most of the pole signs that I've seen are, are close to, I believe, around fifteen feet, which was the, the, the height limitation when they were established. So, and we do, when it comes to signage, you know, there, as always, we're at the mercy of the state and there's been some state legislative changes that have made it much more difficult for us to transition sign types. So with a lot of these things, it's, and I know we've mentioned it several times, it's important to think about how do we incentivize people and, you know, to come into this type of development that we wanna see going forward? And that's how some, some of these things interrelate. Like maybe you're doing some pedestrian improvements or signage improvements or building, getting your building closer. So what do we allow? Is it a, is it a faster review process or different, something to, to kinda get people interested in that type of development and educating them on those opportunities going forward? But signage is, if you look at the staff resources on there, that's an L because it's always, it is complex and there's a lot of different opinions about it. So it is, it is a bit of a heavy lift when you start combing, really digging in and combing through a whole sign ordinance.
I mean, really, it may be an opportunity to, you know, what do we aspire to be? So you get into the Southport Town Limits and they're very, somehow, they've gotten very strict signage requirements. And so you see a very consistent approach to signage. And here, we don't, right? We're just all over the place. And, you know, Hilton Head, what they do from a signage perspective is amazing. And so some businesses, or some towns are able to have that consistency and still abide by the regulations in the State House.
Yeah.
Well, one of the reasons I can answer this is because we're not a historic district. We don't have as many avenues to do that as other places.
Yeah, that's a good point.
All right, and the last section is use. Item nineteen is to permit mixed uses in walkable districts without requiring them. The strategy would be update some zoning regulations to clearly allow mixed-use development by right and appropriate zones. Remove some of the procedural or dimensional barriers that make it difficult to combine residential office or retail uses within the same site. Avoid requiring a mix of uses so that projects can respond flexibly to market conditions. The goal is to make mixed use easy, but not a mandate. And this is one that I don't think we had a specific issue of this happening here.
I've had it happen in other places where I worked where, in that instance, it was actually through a development agreement, but the town had mandated a certain amount of first-floor commercial space in a new mixed-use development. And so that was a requirement that they had to meet. Well, three years after the project was completed, you know, most of that space still sat empty because the, the market condition wasn't there to actually do it. So now the, the building owners got leases that are just sitting open in space that's not being made. So it was flipped to kinda say, okay, we want you to have mixed use and you can have mixed use here, but it's not required for you to have mixed use here. So the spaces that they, that weren't viable for commercial from a market standpoint could be residential or they could be flipped back to commercial if that market, you know, comes to, comes to bear later on. But that definitely does happen, I'll say.
So item twenty is to prohibit single-family residential in our commercial zones. So, item twenty is to prohibit single-family residential in our commercial zones. The strategy here would be to remove single-family residential from the list of permitted uses in commercial zoning districts, maintain the flexibility for mixed-use projects or upper-story residential where commercial activity remains the primary ground-level use. We've said this a lot, but we have limited commercial space here. So, if we're allowing single-family in that space...
Have we surveyed that? Helped to see how many single-family residential properties we have in commercial zone districts?
I do not have a number, but I could find that out.
I will say, the commercial... The CR, the Commercial Recreational Zoning District, is almost entirely single-family residential. There's very little actual commercial development in there. There's actually a section closer to the west end that's a long, almost a block row, I think, of CR zoning district. And because single-family was allowed and is close to the beachfront where people want to live, and the lots were set up in kind of residential block pattern, that's how it developed because the investment in residential, the single-family residential especially, is lower from a code standpoint than in commercial. So, you got a person who wants to build there saying, well, I can build a house here for much cheaper and get my ROI back much faster because I have less investment in it versus...
We've lost a lot of our commercial.
The CR has been largely decimated by single-family residential, yes, sir.
So, that's over there by the Oak Island Villas, right?
Yes, sir. I think there's maybe one vacant parcel in that area that's CR that's still vacant, and the rest is...
I understand that will be a business that will be coming soon.
I believe we've had an application in for that site, yes, sir.
Is that the land next to the Elks, or...?
No, this is farther down, close to the Villas, the condo townhomes that are down there.
And if the future land use plan is identifying additional commercial areas, but if we allow residential in the commercial areas, then we're never gonna achieve what you're trying to achieve with the future land use plan.
Well, if y'all remember too, when the Development Island on Two-Eleven was presenting to y'all, they were like, "We could just build single-family houses here." And I said, "You're right."
That's right, yeah.
That one's gotta change.
Matt, are you specific... In this situation, commercial zoning districts, are you saying specifically CB or what? CR, by the nature of CR, is a mixture of both.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a good question, and I think it... With the limited amount of commercial that we have left, I think it would probably behoove us to look at all the commercial zoning districts in that instance, just because we have so little left. We do want that for true commercial or true mixed-use for a commercial component development versus just a single-family residential.
Because of CR's becoming just R.
Pretty close. A lot of the... Some of the actual beachfront commercial uses, like Island Way and some of the stuff in the Opon is in the CR, but a lot of the stuff that was kind of back that wasn't actually developed just turned into residential, yes, sir.
So, do we have that ability? So, if a property is owned CR, we decide we don't want anymore R, we just want C?
So, the R is actually recreation in it, not even residential?
Do we have that ability to say no residential here, where before they had a latitude to...
Not currently under the state statutes. But that's when we get back into the incentivization.
And how could we enforce that if somebody speculated, somebody lives in Charlotte, they just inherited grandmother's fortune, "I'll go buy some land in Oak Island and build on it someday." And they do that and pay us taxes for three or four years, and then we tell them, "Oh, we just changed the rules. You can't build a house there now." Can we get away with that?
If the Downzoning provisions from the state that limit our ability to change uses were allowed, if they hadn't pulled a permit to actually build a house, then yes, you could change the use, and they would not be allowed to do that. It's only when they actually apply for a permit that we can't change the rules while they're in the middle of the permit process. And if we do change the rules, they get a choice under which rules.
They got two years after they pull a permit.
So, item twenty-one is to coordinate zoning use categories with the International Building Code. The strategy here is to review and revise the zoning use table and definitions to align more closely with the IBC use classifications. I'm gonna let Matt tell you why this is a good idea, this one's.
Yeah. So, this one is technical, and as you can see on the chart, it is XL. It's a very heavy lift, and it's got a lot of community sensitivity anticipated towards it. What happens a lot with someone who wants to come in and even outfit a building is you have the building code, you know, occupancy classification, and then you have the zoning classification, and they don't always mirror each other necessarily. And so, what this would do is kind of help people who maybe do have an understanding of the building code, you know, more closely align those two uses together, and they say, "Okay, I know it's this occupation in the building code. I know what I'm gonna be when I come to the town for my zoning permit." It is extremely complex to make something like that happen. That's why it's XL. And you do get into, you know, further refining potentially your table, which is why it's kind of a high sensitivity towards it. But definitely didn't want to let it go unsaid because that's a change that, you know, a builder or upfitter or somebody like that, you know, they can very quickly understand, you know, the use category versus... Because they understand the occupancy of it.
So, it's pretty clear that we can't do all of these at one time. Are you all gonna be able to prioritize these in a strategic way that gets the right things done first?
Absolutely. I think we want to make sure that we get your guidance on which ones we should pursue. They do take quite a bit of staff time. We don't want to be pursuing it if it's not something that council wants us to work towards. If you all are comfortable with all these and give us the go-ahead to start that process, we'll come back. We've already done some internal discussions about that, but we can come back with a prioritization of the ones you ask us to move forward with.
Good, because we don't know as a body. We might pick something that's of interest to us, but it's not... Doesn't flow... Make the flow any better. So, I would count on you all to tell us what those... How those need to be aligned.
Assuming we... Yeah, we get the full council's approval to continue forward, then we'll take the ones that you approve and strategize the prioritization of them.
I'm excited.
This is huge.
Well, I see that... I see how these all dovetail. So, for council to pick and choose what we perceive to be important, not being an expert, I'll speak for myself, I would retreat from making such a recommendation. I think if we... What we want to accomplish is in the consolidated land use plan, if that's the vision, I think it would behoove me to say, "We rely on your technical expertise to bring the land use plan about. For us to try to pick or choose or prioritize with the six elements that you've presented us would... For me to do that would be foolish because I don't have the background. But I love the trajectory that is outlined in the land use plan, and I think this is where I would behoove council to give you your reins to do what you're trained to do."
This will get us towards the future land use plan.
Right.
And so many of those are intertwined, right? So, you've got, you know, number thirteen is intertwined with number nine, which is intertwined with number sixteen. So, they don't all stand on their own, right? So, it's kind of like this.
With the streetscape plan, with the parking discussions, all of it pulling together.
And also, Halle needs some bullets in her gun.
I just hope I'm here to see the outcome.
Yes.
I'm very excited about it and hope to still be upright and appreciate the... All of the work that will bring it to fruition. I think it's a very exciting time for Oak Island, and we're at a crossroads. We really couldn't be in a better place.
This is how you plan your future?
Yeah.
Plan for what you want, you identify what needs to change, and you start tackling it.
Gotta have a plan.
So, thank you all for how much effort you've put into this, and it's a huge body of work, and I can only imagine that this is what... This small document is the reflection of months of work on y'all's part, and I appreciate everything you've put into it. A lot of insight and expertise is reflected in what we're looking at today.
And I do want to mention, the Business Advisory Board has been involved for this for many months too. They didn't recommend any specific, because that's Planning Board job, but we talked about these topics extensively, talked about the pain points, those examples. They have been very involved in this as well.
Please give them our... Extend our appreciation to them as well.
I put this in my packet. I wish I had a...
I'd love to one, but I can't take it apart. Good job.
So, if you come across any additional questions, otherwise, we will bring it back to the August...
I will tell the others, I thought it was very well presented. Very well presented. Lot of research.
Just to mention, it's been maybe three years ago now, four years ago, as the Planning Board started their work on cleaning up the UDO, there was a fairly comprehensive list of things that needed to be looked at, maybe not specifically to lean code, but it might be helpful for y'all to look at that list. I know that Kerry McCullough has such a list, and it's been around for a while. There may be some things in there that...
Absolutely.
And consistent with the COG, and Matt helped me with that, I mentioned it on Tuesday, it's all... Several of these are consistent with, I think, three, four, and six of the COG's recommendations as well, so it's not different. It's consistent with, but the UDO work will look at that as well.
Absolutely.
Points.
Any other questions, council? We have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, wait.
We were made to understand that there's gonna be at least questions and clarifications on the ground.
We have that opportunity, but not as part of the meeting.
Yep. Left to do outside the meeting because it's a recessed council meeting. It was an advertised item, so we'll be happy to answer additional questions regarding other topics in one-on-ones or two-on-twos, not...
So, we sat here today and amended the agenda for today's meeting, and could we have amended it to also include questions and answers on that? And we didn't.
What was the vote to amend? I'm sorry, I thought it was... You talked about it right away.
The vote to amend was to add this discussion because it was only on our presentation on Tuesday.
So, the sensitivity here is I was specifically asked to not have the discussion as part of the official meeting, especially if votes were to be taken by council members who couldn't be here.
There was no intention of any votes being taken. It was simply an opportunity to ask questions and get clarification. And I'll state again for the public, these meetings have been on the books for months, and if somebody chooses not to be here, then they choose not to be here. They can catch up later. But it's a missed opportunity. Residents are upset, and I guess what I'll do from this point forward is every email and phone call I get, I'm just gonna turn them over to somebody else and say, "Go talk to somebody else about it."
I apologize. I'll take responsibility for that communication. I was trying to balance the requests being given, and I'll... I'm responsible for making that determination. I apologize.
I appreciate that, but I think that the shared responsibility for Councilwoman Carter, these are meetings that have been on the books forever, and if individual choosers do not attend, they can... Councilman Martin couldn't attend, but he had questions, and he gave those questions to Terry to ask. For Councilman Bach to say, "I don't want you to talk about it because I can't be there," it's unprofessional on so many levels. It's just not... It's... It should never happen. Should never happen, especially a sensitive topic like the one we were talking about. And I have run interference with no less than fifty residents in the past three days. I'm just trying to take the heat off the town and try to talk to people, talk them off the ledge, and for us to just go dark on it and can't bring it up again for another month is just... That is just... That's a bad decision. Terrible decision.
Go ahead.
I hesitate to jump in because it is certainly council's choice. Just to add to the conversation, there is some concern that we recessed a meeting, we did not advertise publicly, that that would be a topic for this, and we're very sensitive to making sure we don't have a bait and switch, that we have very well-advertised work sessions of what council's topics will be so that the public has the opportunity to come to the meetings, that they know the topics. And this came up so late in the game. This was already intended and advertised for this particular purpose, so we would have added to some... To a meeting without the public's opportunity to know that it was on the agenda. Still, your legal right, but I think that was some concern as well. But again, from a staff standpoint, we will stay as long as you need to help answer questions on additional topics, just not as a full...
But the three of us can't stay.
That's right.
So, that's a huge inefficiency and wasting time and lack of transparency.
Again, that was perhaps not the best call on my part, but I was trying to do the right thing and had that request. And I do agree, we have scheduled meetings, and it's council's responsibility to be here. I was trying to be accommodating, and I would be equally accommodating with some. I would like to express personally, not that I can... This is not official, but perhaps to take some of the... Relieve some of the pain point that the community is experiencing, maybe the town would consider putting a moratorium on any further actions regarding the gravel in the right-of-way until council can reconvene, and we could even do so perhaps as a special meeting.
Well, that's gonna be my next question. I would like a special meeting be scheduled as soon as possible to get this... Get this... Go talking about this and figure out where we went wrong, if we went wrong in June, and get it fixed.
But to take the sting out of the situation that we not take further action...
We can't take action.
I understand. I'm just making it a request. I know it's not part of this meeting, but...
I don't want to hear people constantly throwing rocks at somebody that's not here today. Bob's missed meetings before because he's had work conflict. People have missed meetings. Mark Martin's had his wife's doctor's appointment getting her ready for surgery. John Bach had a doctor's appointment that he can't reschedule for six months, and he needs to know an answer. People have missed... I haven't missed meetings in three and a half years, but people have missed meetings, and I'm not gonna throw them under the bus for missing a meeting.
I apologize if we came across that way, but we don't stop business just because someone can't be at the meeting. And if they had a question, and Councilman Martin did have specific questions, and he specifically gave those to Terry to make sure they were addressed during today's discussion.
I'm here, but if it can't be addressed today, then it can't be addressed today. I'm here to address whatever we talk about.
Well, what I'm upset about is that we were strung along through the day yesterday believing that it was gonna be discussed today, and then we get here and find out that it can't be.
Lisa, I don't want to get sideways on our... Lisa, I don't want to get sideways on our, our procedures. How would you advise we proceed at this point?
Well, I mean, it's, it's up to the elected officials whether you want to have that as an agenda item or not. I mean, the agenda was already amended. There's nothing that says you can't amend it again, but it's up to you all to decide how you want to address it. It's not really up to us to, to tell you whether to handle it today or not.
Well, it, it seems like the better plan to, we're not going to be able to include Councilman Martin because he is away until August 9th, but like Bob said, I do have his questions and his comments and his suggestions, but to include Mr. Bach, then I would request that we schedule a meeting, a special meeting, as soon as we can find a place on the calendar.
Does that seem acceptable to everyone?
I'm not opposed to meeting anytime. I'll check my calendar and see when I'm free, but I'm usually the one that can show up all the time. And I agree, if, if we're going to talk about this, this is the frustrating part. Here's frustration. Terry and I put on the agenda to talk about gravel. If the person here has gravel, the person there should be able to have gravel, blah, blah, blah. That's what we talked about. That's what we put on the agenda. You start peeling back the layers of the onion, and somebody that put gravel down 12 years ago and says, somebody told me I'm okay, nobody has any proof, that's frustrating. Somebody put gravel down five years ago, they can prove it or they can't prove it. That's frustrating. Nobody talked to anybody for the whole month prior to that coming up to say, hey, there's four more layers we need to look at. So, then we vote, and all of a sudden, Bob tells everybody, come to the council and talk about the gravel issue. Call Bill, John, Mark, Terry, Liz, and say, hey, there's something else we didn't address on this gravel issue. People are being punished. I felt sorry for every person that got up and talked the other day, and I hope there's something we can do for them. I've said all along, if we can't prove who has a permit and who cannot have a permit, from this point forward, you have to have a permit. From that point in the back, you shouldn't. If we ever get around to voting on that, that's where I'll, where I'll go, but.
Was, was there a motion to amend the meeting to have this discussion?
I would make a motion to amend our agenda for today to include discussion on gravel, parking pads in the right-of-way.
The ma, the mayor told John that that would not be addressed today. That's a curb law.
It's just a discussion.
Well, I don't care about discussions, but we can't take a vote.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We've got a motion on the table.
There is a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No, there's a motion to discuss.
Open it up for discussion.
I'm tired of playing these silly games. Let's just end this meeting and go on with it.
Then you have to withdraw your motion, or ask for a second.
Well, that's, mayor asked for a second, but it's not my role to ask for a second, right?
I'm sorry?
I said, I made, I made the motion.
Right, so someone would have to second it.
I have that, a motion to amend the agenda was made and it was seconded by Councilwoman Carter.
Okay.
So, that's what's on the floor currently.
Thank you. All in favor? Two to one. Ask away.
So, Bill, to your point, I, I completely agree with what you, with what you said. What, what happened to me was that I feel like I had either conflicting or incomplete information and so many different dates about when this was put in place and when that was put in place, and I agree, I think, and, and some other dates have come to light since that meeting that Councilman Chulo has researched, and so I agree, I think we need to find the reasonable date when the ordinance was put into place and, and go back to that point. Now, what my colleague, Mr. Martin suggested was, we've talked about trying to be fair to everybody, and it's not fair to the people who did the process and the procedure and paid the permit fee. And then we've heard that there aren't that many people who've actually gone that route. It's mostly been people who just did it on, on their own. So, you know, Councilman Martin and I are in agreement that if there's a handful of people who paid the permit fee, give them their money back and grandfather everybody in.
May we clarify? Because I think it was based on some misinformation. So, the January 10th, and Matt, you can fill in the details, but that was a 2023, and it was only open for a couple of months, and it was immediately closed, because it had not been something that had been through council. So, we are able to, if someone comes in and says they did get a permit during that small window in 2023, we are able to identify that and we will absolutely use that to say, yes, you've already done this. But it's not as large as you might believe. It doesn't go back seven years, 10 years. That was never, it, as far back as, I think, Matt researched through 2016 and back to 2012.
Sorry.
Didn't happen until just a few years ago.
So, the only proof we have is for like a two or three month period in 23.
Well, the only time that there ever even was a permit process at all.
So, if somebody were to get gravel last year, did they pay a permit fee or did they just?
No, because there was no opportunity to do that. We.
So, there's only two months' worth of people that were concerned with at this moment?
We, perhaps some squeaked in afterwards. Matt's going to check as people come in, and if they say during that time period they did get a permit, we will research it and certainly honor that.
I think that makes the quandary a whole lot easier.
Yeah, we can't penalize people if we did something if we didn't, and, and I was mistaken in thinking that we had this ordinance in place to way back when.
The lady that came up and said, two or three people from town told me I was okay. God bless that lady. She had two or three people from town tell her she was okay. I don't want her to be penalized.
So, I'm going to make sure too that I help frame the discussion. There's, seems to me, two different components we're talking about. One is obstructions and encroachments in the right-of-way. One is new gravel parking pads, and they, they're getting conflagrated, and, and maybe that will help clarity of the discussion, is that there are two different issues here. Having those obstructions and encroachments, correct me at any point, has been in place for a very long time, that nothing has been allowed, nothing in the right-of-way. We're not talking about people's private property. That's where it also is getting confusing. Why don't you grandfather, why, you can't do that. We're not talking about private property. So, those were already not allowed. What we're trying to do is allow for a new thing, an additional parking pad in the right-of-way. Does that help frame it a little bit? And then Matt certainly take over with the details from there.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and a question to that is, and I, I understand that, and I fully support keeping the hardscapes, encroachments, and those things out of the town's right-of-way.
We've been fighting that for years.
Right, so can you, can you all tell me when that ordinance went into place? I mean, has it been on the books since Oak Island became Oak Island or?
For having nothing in the right-of-way.
Having, having structured.
Structural improvements.
Structural improvements in the right-of-way.
Yeah, so the, um, bear with me just a second here.
Anything.
Yeah.
Other than mailboxes.
Yeah, so, prior to, so, from what I can tell, I've gone back to 2012, and we can certainly pull even order, order ordinances if we need to. The section that, 26 dash one that you looked at last time, which deals with construction or other improvements in the street right-of-way, has existed since the inception of the town, since 2001. So, that section's been there. It's been amended a couple of times, once in 2004, 2017, and 2023. The obstructions ordinance, so 14 dash 37 of the ordinance is the ordinance that declares obstructions in the right-of-way as public nuisances, and then goes to lay out a definition for those obstructions, specifically exempts the items from 26-1, so they kind of talk to each other a little bit. That one was adopted in July of 2020 in that instance, if that's helpful at all.
So, you know, given that information, my, my, my personal opinion and the way I would, would vote is that we continue to enforce hardscapes in the right-of-way, except for what's allowed, mailboxes and the things.
So, any of the exceptions in 26-1, right?
Right. But that we, it sounds like we should not and can't penalize people who have put gravel down, except for maybe that short period in January 2023 that we, you know, and then if we adopted the, the amendments in June, that is the rule for the new parking pads, any new parking pads that occur, and folks would have to abide by that. Is that correct? The 10 by 20 space? Okay.
You can make it effective going forward, absolutely.
I'm of the opinion, if we ever get around to having a meeting on this, if we ever set a date, that everybody's probably going to be in agreement, or at least there will be three of us right here that know that we're going to be in agreement, so.
Today, I was just looking for clarification on dates, because I couldn't make a good decision, I didn't make a good decision based on the information I had at the June meeting, and I couldn't get it clear in my head what the various dates were when things went into place or things changed, or, so that, that was what I wanted to do.
And we can discuss it if we, when we have our meeting, whenever that is, or the people that did pay in those two months in 23, how we can appease that situation and make it right.
Sure, absolutely.
Hundred percent.
I think we're on the same page. We just have to get five people here to be allowed to talk.
You really only need four.
Yeah.
Well, and not, not speaking for Councilman Martin, but he and I had a, a conversation where we understood each other and we're in agreement.
In the meantime, before their August meeting, or whenever we have a special meeting, can we ask to just put a moratorium on sending out any letters with respect to gravel, parking pads in the right-of, any gravel in the right-of-way? Not hardscapes, not anything, but just, the letters are creating, as you know, the angst level in this community. I've never seen it like this before.
A lot of those letters, they're getting because of other things in the right-of-way. Yeah.
So, do the, do the, I've seen one or two of the letters by screenshot. Do those letters specify you're getting this not because of the gravel, but because you have something else in the right-of-way, an encroachment in the right-of-way?
Yeah, so the, the, the letters know, are courtesy notices, so they don't go into great detail about the specificity, because what we've done is use things that have been identified in the past to notify you that you may have an issue based on these new rules. An official notice of violation or determination has not been and would not be forwarded, because you got to set an abatement period, so I can't even legally send somebody a notice of violation until that abatement period's up. But we do want people to, to know that there are new ordinances in place and that what you have in your situation may not comply with those, so letting them know. It's also important for when that abatement period might end, so that they're not, oh my God, I've gotten a citation or a notice of violation that, that I might have a problem, so.
But we should be able to have a meeting before the abatement period.
Oh, absolutely.
We have six months and 12 months.
Yeah.
We're just courtesy notifying.
Next week or?
And, and we have.
One of these meetings.
You know, if, if it helps the, the council, we, we have several of these, so I'm happy to ask my staff to focus on obstructions sticking up out of the ground first, because we have plenty of those that we can, we can tackle. I'm, I'm happy to do that.
That is the, the safety issues.
Yeah, safety and access issues.
That we are really concerned about.
Yeah, very simple for us to do.
And, and we're not here trying to go to war for those situations. We're trying to help the people that.
Want a parking pad.
That just want, that put down some gravel once upon a time, and now they're, now they're being told they owe some money or they have to pick it up.
They've already had it for, you know, 20, 30 years.
I think we all want to protect those people.
Second request I asked was to, when the, they, when your technicians find or a violation with a hardscape, an obstruction, is can we ask them to please flag the right-of-way?
To flag the right-of-way?
Put a landscape sign that says right-of-way.
We're not legally allowed to do that. The only one who can legally locate a property line in state of North Carolina is a registered and licensed surveyor.
So, can we change the letter to indicate what the definition of the right-of-way is? Because we don't see that.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to make resources. We have maps of right-of-way widths throughout the town, anything that we can do to help people out, even if they want to call us and say, hey, we, because we have wheel measures, we, will you come measure and just, I can't give you an exact, but can you give me a, you know, an approximate and like where the right-of-way might end based on the width and things?
The more information you can put in the letter.
Absolutely.
That's going to cut down on the amount of phone calls and emails that you get. The less information you have in the letter, it just creates angst, and then they get on the phone or call us or email us, and, and then I'm trying to explain, I went to six houses this week, what the right-of-way is, and I'm tripping myself up there.
It's going to be tough, absolutely.
It's just not, you know, in, in some streets, it's much easier than others. Some streets, it's extremely difficult.
Well, help with a general understanding, and don't let me misspeak, but in most of our neighborhood streets, it's 20 feet from the pavement.
Yeah, that's right.
Pretty good general guideline for people, and if, so if they have a statue five feet off the pavement, it's a real obvious violation. If they're 19 feet, we probably won't even, we're, you know, we're, we're looking for the really difficult safety. They're impeding police and fire trucks if we need to get down their street. That's what we're focused on. So, if they want a general guideline, 20 feet off the pavement.
And, and like I said, we're, we're happy to help come out and measure or meet anybody on site who has questions, you know, well, I've got plenty of staff that, that can make themselves available to do something like that for folks.
Unofficial.
Yeah.
The other thing I want to ask real quick, Matt, goes on my, you know, that you got was, 26.1, 26 dot 14D states a large canopy tree shall be planted in the right-of-way adjacent to the lot if they want to put a parking pad in. So, what we're telling residents, if they want to put in a parking pad, gravel parking pad on one side of the driveway, they have to put a canopy tree in the right-of-way on the other side of the driveway.
An obstruction.
An obstruction. So, I could be.
Yes, we presented that at the work session in March, I believe, that we first had that conversation, and then it was in the ordinance in June. That was a both, both times, so it wasn't anything new.
Why miss that?
To add the tree.
But to put it in the right-of-way, obstruction in the right-of-way, that's, that's, I'm, we're telling people.
Behind the pad, wasn't it? Behind the pad.
So, it, it can be, it can be within the right-of-way, it can be behind the pad, as long as it doesn't obstruct a stormwater or anything like that.
It doesn't say that, though. I mean, in, in our code, it says specifically in the right-of-way.
It would be in the right-of-way, yes. In that 20-foot width on their front property.
And here we are trying to stop obstruction.
Yeah, just like while, while we're planting them in oak and holly and the hundreds of trees that we've been planting are in the right-of-way.
We planted 300 trees in the right-of-way in the town, because those are, those are town trees, and the, the difference is the, the irregular obstruction that someone might put out there, you know, you look at the co, the cost benefit of something, a tree, you know, I hate to, you know, lean all into the environmental side solely, but a, a tree provides shade, stormwater detention, all those things.
I got you, I'm not there with that.
So, a tree in the right-of-way can be a benefit, certainly, and, and so this seemed like a, a reasonable way to say, okay, we know we want more street trees, because we've planted several hundred, and so this is an opportunity for when someone is asking for an allowance in the right-of-way to further that, that initiative, but it, it's certainly something, you know, in, in some instances though, and the reason we put a fee of lieu in there, it's because there's going to be instances where someone, here's my stormwater, here's my water line, here's my sewer line, here's my gravel, I ain't got anywhere to plant a tree. So, in that instance, they can pay the fee in lieu and we can plant a tree in a public space somewhere else, so.
So, I think, I think the, the idea works in some places. On Oak Island Drive. So, I think, I think the, the idea works in some places, on Oak Island Drive, I haven't seen anybody come put anything personal in the space between the sidewalk and the road.
On East Oak Island Drive, you can't.
They do it a lot of times. So, that's, that's where we planted our trees, and that's, that's a great place for them, but on our side streets where we don't have as much room, I can see that it could become a problem in some cases, I, I don't know.
Yeah, we, if someone came in and applied for one of these types of permits, and we looked at the tree, I mean, the, the stormwater and public work staff would look at it, and certainly if there was no space to, to plant a tree without interfering with, with the utilities on the site, then we would give them the option for that, that fee in lieu, and that was the intent.
How would they know that? So, they just start digging in the right of way?
Uh, no, they, they, they can locate water lines and.
Our GIS knows where stuff like that.
Eight-one-one.
Yeah, GIS, eight-one-one, staff can locate utilities.
We need to include that in the communications.
When they, when they come in and request the permit, that's when we.
Get all that information.
Right.
Got it.
We go out to that particular individual's home, discuss with them, find the appropriate location for both the pad and the tree with the property owner.
Yeah.
So, just one more question to try to help me do my job better, when I get these emails with photos and copies of the letters, and they say, I guess my question is, so I had one gentleman contact me who has gravel across his property, and then just behind the gravel, he has pilings, I'm fairly certain those pilings are maybe only ten or eleven feet off the street, so is it fair to say you're not getting this notice about your gravel, you are getting this notice about encroachments that you may have in the right of way, and the best thing to do is contact town staff and have somebody come?
That's what the letter says.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that was consistent, that's consistent.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair, and we, we actually have a dedicated zoning technician who's, who's handling these cases, because it is such a kind of a big lift.
The eighteen?
Hang on.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you can definitely, and, and even if they're not available, we have, we have plenty of, of the staff that can assist them, absolutely.
But I've seen pictures where folks got letters, and they have no encroachment in the right of way, other than the gravel that they put down, and so they are thinking the town's coming after them for the gravel, and they're saying the gravel was here when I bought my house, so somehow we gotta clarify that message or differentiate that message.
It seems like that, that is the, the heart of what I think is still the issue. Gravel all over your right of way, correct me if I'm wrong, has never been allowed, right?
Except for that period where.
Where, where he gave him a permit for some portion of it, or that, other than that little small couple months window that was done in mistake, shouldn't have been done, it's never been allowed there.
So, we did have, we have had an ordinance in place for gravel in the right of way. I, I'm sorry, I wrote down that we didn't.
I'm, I'm really confused.
Nothing's been allowed.
Structural improvements, I got, that was clear, I got that, but I still don't understand about the gravel.
So, for the gravel, it, it's the, it, sorry, I'll, I'll jump in here, the, it's the section fourteen thirty-seven, which started in two thousand and twenty, and the twenty-six dash one, that's always been there kind of talking to each other a little bit, because the obstruction ordinance does define obstruction as a very wide range of things, including just simple landscaping, so if you have mulch, or if you have gravel, ground level, that, that's considered by our ordinance an obstruction, and if it's not clearly exempted in twenty-six dash one, then it could be considered an encroachment.
That changes things, then, if we have had, if we have had something on the books.
So, let's stay on that.
At least two thousand and twenty, yes, ma'am.
Right.
Fourteen thirty-seven.
But I, and I did reference that, I didn't even ask you, and you came back, Matt, and said that mulch is not allowed, so, again, I kind of go, okay, let's try to wrap our head around this thing, right, so weeds, fur patches, dead grass is allowed, but mulch is not allowed, and mulch is not a hardscape.
Mulch and gravel, though, is not stabilized shoulder, so that, the material, unless you're using a certain type of fifty-seven stone gravel that's a certain size, it's very likely that, that mulch material or that gravel material that doesn't meet that standard is going to end up in the Davis Canal, going to end up in the ICW, going to end up in the tidal ditch, I mean, we see it on all these side streets where people have stuff that runs down, so that's the reason why you would, now, council, it's your prerogative to exempt or not exempt as many things as, as you feel comfortable doing, but that's the reason why you, you maybe would not exempt some of those things, because it, it is not stabilized, whereas a, a plant material, a, a grass, or even, yes, a weed or something like that, is, is stabilizing that shoulder and keeping that, that sediment in place.
If I may, while we're talking about having to dredge the canal, I suggest we not put any other materials in the right of way that's going to end up in the canal, we're working against each other, I mean, ourselves, and so that's one consideration. Another is when we start, because I may not be here for the next, for the next meeting when it's scheduled, I ask council to consider, when you're looking at size, what that size is going to accommodate, so what do you want to allow in your right of way, a boat trailer? I know it has to be a vehicle, a, a vehicle that you can drive, but there's, there's some pretty hefty trucks, especially if it's work equipment, so we currently don't have an ordinance for home businesses, so the bigger the pad, the bigger we're allowing a vehicle, which can be a visual obstruction, as well as a physical obstruction in, on our streets, so I just wanted to ask us and your deliberations to please consider those things, and also please consider what you're going to allow at street ends, they have been sacred since the beginning of time.
That's, yeah.
And that is a road, per se, and you, you need to separate out what you want that parallels the road versus what you're going to allow at street ends, because those are two different physical environments, and I just want, because that was a point of confusion in June, and I just want to be sure that you're clear about those two different environments.
I think we were really clear on that, just to enforce the street ends, but, you know, what I, what I struggle with, Matt, is that, I mean, gravel is stable, it doesn't get washed away when you have rain.
Depending on the type of gravel, it certainly, it absolutely can.
I watch, I watch the sand and dirt I watch, I watch down the street, when gravel I watch is still sitting there, because of the nature, the, the weight of that, so it doesn't typically, I don't watch, I don't see it move, like I see the dirt and the sand moving, so if that's the argument we're using, I just don't know if I can support that argument.
I think the reason we specify number fifty-seven stone is because it compacts, if it packs down, it, all the crevices and edges join together, I have number seventy-eight in my driveway, and at the end of my driveway, if there's enough water running down the street, it's gone.
Pea gravel is notorious, the, the round shape of it.
That never, never packs down.
Yeah, finer stones, certainly, can come down, absolutely.
So, given all the questions we have, and, and maybe not quite full, you know, understandable answers yet, I would suggest that we schedule this special meeting, continue to hash this out, and in the meantime, just remind the residents that what they've received is a courtesy notice, and no action's going to be taken against them right now, and we are continuing to, we've gone back, and we're going to continue to review this and figure out where we might have made a mistake, and try to fix it.
I do suggest, in that communication, that they do have a responsibility for delineating whether it's gravel or an obstruction or encroachment, so that they can do in this timeframe, so they should be responsible for delineating whether they got a letter for an encroachment or an obstruction versus whether they got a letter because there's gravel.
We can do that, yes, ma'am, happy to.
So, I think that should be part of that message, understand what you're being cited for.
We'll, we'll, we'll clarify it, though.
We'll clarify, because right now gravel is an obstruction.
I, I understand, yeah, yeah.
But we'll make that more clear.
Absolutely. And like I said, we'll, we'll be happy to, for the, especially for the interim to prioritize our efforts towards, you know, getting letters to the people that have the, the safety, the access type of encroachment problems, or obstruction problems, so that, but also going forward, we'll be happy to keep it clear on the.
If compacted gravel will keep it from drifting, then we might consider that making that part of the requirement, because I'm glad your gravel doesn't move, Bob, but I'm at the end of thirty-fourth Street.
I have special gravel.
And it was compacted.
He's got Gorilla Glue.
And it will move six or eight feet under a heavy rain toward the canal, and we've got to rake that back in, technically, it's a town responsibility, but we do it, I'm not going to call the town to rake gravel back into a, a pad that they installed, it's not even my pad, the town put it in, so just, all of these things are, I'm, I'm trying to take all of the threads that are being put out here and trying to bring them back together as considerations whenever you do act on the gravel, that we, we're shoring it up to make the best determination and communication possible.
I can't speak for Mark or John, but, and I know the mayor's going to be out of town next Friday, but Bob and Terry seem to think next Friday's a good time to call a meeting.
Would you, would you and Matt and Catherine, I'm not sure what your vacation is?
I'm here.
Next Friday, the eighteenth, I'm here.
I'm here.
So, could we schedule, and, and hopefully John can make it, we know Mark still can't make that, but, because I'm.
Pardon me?
I prefer earlier rather than later.
Nine o'clock, ten o'clock, eight o'clock, I don't care.
Nine o'clock's good with me.
My dogs wake up at six.
That doesn't work, are you back on the Monday, the twenty-first?
Not till the twenties, functionally not, the twenty-first is a travel day.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't need to be here, John can run the meeting.
But you know what, we always want to give everybody the, an equal chance of, of being here.
Ten.
And if we do come to some kind of resolution on the eighteenth, that's adequate time to get it on the August, potentially.
Is one week's notice good enough for us to have a meeting?
Yes, sir. Commander was called at ten, so.
Do you have a ten o'clock call, or the quarter, but I can move that.
Not at nine, nine.
Meet at nine, leave at quarter to ten, and.
That, that's absolutely fine, I can work with them, it's just a call.
I don't think we need a whole lot of time, other than say our piece and then vote.
You need two hours.
You want to meet at eight-thirty instead of nine? No?
I'd have it here at eight-thirty.
Okay.
Fun, I'll, I'll adjust mine.
And, and I hate to ask for more, but would it be possible to give council a warrant cheater that says, because I had notes that said the driveway permits went into effect in two thousand and one, and I'm going to go home and read, reread these fourteen thirty-seven, and just to try to understand them a little better, it's confusing, but if we can just be clear on dates when things were allowed and not allowed, that'll help us.
Perhaps a timeline.
Perhaps, it'll help us make a better decision.
Yeah, I can put together a timeline cheat, we've done that in the past.
Me too, I know you have enough to do without something else.
We can do it.
That's, yeah, happy to do that.
Totally reasonable.
Anything we can do to help clarify, educate, make it less confusing for everyone.
And until we ultimately have the vote in August, since we're asking for things, can we ask for a moratorium specifically for gravel, parking pads, gravel in the right of way, just stop for now, put a pause on that, hardscape, obstructions, anything, statues and landscape logs, all that stuff, yes, gravel, just give us until next month.
I guess what I'm saying is.
What do we have a moratorium on, we're not taking action.
Just don't.
Not taking action now, anyway.
Just don't write it, don't take, no more letters, until we get this resolved.
So, the, it sounds like the courtesy letters maybe have all gone out already, or?
No, not even close, not even close, no, ma'am, and what, what I'm saying is certainly not by next week, you know, if we, if we do focus on those other, on the safety, obstructions, things like that, that we, we likely won't even get to the other ones by the time we meet again, certainly, so I, I think without necessarily directing staff to have a moratorium, we have, we have enough of, like, true, sticking out of the ground obstructions, that we can keep sending those letters out, and we'll certainly not get to the other ones by the time we've met again and got some direction on how we want to go, so.
So, one more point, this is not an opportunity, and we need to be clear in our communications, for someone to go buy gravel and put it in the right of way, hoping to beat the clock.
The thing is.
Have a, we have images.
The ordinance is in place, I mean.
We have images, and we know if that's the case, and you will be fined.
The, the ordinance is effective, it's just the enforcement of the pre-existing conditions.
But if we start grandfathering.
Yeah, we're not, yeah.
In this, whatever determination we make, then that's, I can see that happening.
Not, it hasn't been allowed, it's still not allowed.
I understand, but that doesn't mean that someone won't try to take advantage of the situation.
Yeah.
Well, our code enforcement people are pretty perceptive, they're out and about.
We've, we've picked up several of them, we have records of several of them, just from riding by one day and then riding by the next day, and in between the two, some improvements happened.
I saw, I saw one of our code enforcement people today, out of her truck, walked to the right side of the house, and then she walked over to the left side of the house, I don't know what she was looking for, but she was looking.
Looking, yeah, absolutely.
So, Mayor, can you reach out to Mr. Baugh and see if he's available at nine on the eighteenth?
Yeah, that's Lisa's responsibility to set meeting times and the like, and I have every confidence in John's ability to run the meeting.
Should we, should we tentatively see if there's a second date, because that always becomes a problem trying to schedule something, so you mentioned the twenty-second, Bob.
That's a Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday, I mean, I could also do that at nine AM.
We have a scoping meeting in Wilmington on the twenty-second, Catherine and I will be at.
The twenty-third.
I could do the twenty-first or twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-second, I have to be in slowed at eleven-thirty.
I'm in Wilmington all day on Monday, the twenty-first.
Twenty-third at nine AM, is everybody, just as a second call back, in case John says no, I've got a conflict on the eighteenth.
Twenty-third at nine.
So, can we hold that as a back, can do that as well?
I can only meet from nine to ten, I know, I don't think it's going to be enough time.
I don't think it's going to be that long either, I mean.
Oh, I do, I'm afraid.
Okay.
I, and I will caveat that, that I hope that this will be the next to last meeting that we have to talk about this topic and voting on it August, and just be done with it, and then get back to work and focus on the really important things we need to be focusing on, but the twenty-third is, I, I've only got an hour, I'm afraid it might be longer than that. How about the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth?
Mix the twenty-third?
If the twenty-fourth works for everybody, you're out.
Well, I'm the guy that said he's always freed up, I guess twenty-four's okay, too.
That can run it.
I can, absolutely.
How about the twenty-fifth? You got that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. We'll get it done the eighteenth or twenty-fourth.
Yeah, let's hope the eighteenth works, and I just didn't want us to get stymied for two weeks trying to find another day.
Understand.
And I'll put another plug in for the Thursday after every council meeting, that's why we have these reserved for.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing it.
Most a year now, so, because it is tough, it's tough for all of us to schedule things, I understand.
And again, my apology, I was trying to do the right thing, but I understand the consternation with making that determination, so you have my apologies. So, do we have a meeting, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
For me?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for that discussion, that was really helpful. Thank you.